Good evening. The June 5th meeting of Troy City Council. I am Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Brock Heath, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Hey, let's go to break. God, I just want to come to you here and say thank you for the amazing weather that you gave us this weekend for the festival. It's a big deal and an important thing to a lot of people here and in other areas. So, thank you for giving us sunshine and good weather and protection for those that are there. God, thank you for all the people that are defending us here and also overseas. We continue to hear about attacks, especially in England, God, so we will be with those people, protect them, put your hedge of protection and your armor and your angels with them, and help to defeat those enemies. Help us to stop that on a spiritual level and on a physical level. God, thank you for all the blessings, all the favors, all the great things that are happening in all of our lives. We declare victory over that, and we're going to be moving forward in an amazing way, in your name and your son's name. Amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members of Council are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes from the May 15th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, May 15, 2017. Committee reports. Recreation and Parks recommend that legislation be prepared authorizing agreement with ALT Architecture regarding design of Miami Shores Clubhouse improvements. Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing the director to enter into non-ticketed use agreements for events at Treasure Island Park on June 24 and August 6. Resolution R. 28, 2017. Agreement with ALT Architecture was given first reading and adopted. A resolution in memoriam to Frankie Basler was approved. Ordinance number O. 12, 2017. Authorizing a non-ticketed use agreements for 2017 events at Treasure Island Park was given first reading and was adopted. Following various comments, Council adjourned at 7:31 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move and accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We have a member of committee reports this evening, and we'll begin with the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a few here. The first one, the committee met on May 30th regarding the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the final plat of the Nottingham subdivision, Section 10, be approved. The section is in general accordance with the approved preliminary plan, and this is the final section, and the plat contains 26 building lots. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the final plat of the Nottingham subdivision, Section 10, as presented, including the dedication of the right-of-way, and that is respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions from Council? You may continue.
All right. Our second one was on June 2nd. This committee met to consider a six-month moratorium on the issuance of any zoning permits related to certain principally permitted uses in the area of North Market Street, while a consultant completes a strategic economic development reuse analysis for that area. The moratorium would impact 50 parcels in this area that are Zone B-1 or B-2. There are 166 principal permitted uses of these two zoning districts. The moratorium would be on 28 of those uses for which a new zoning or occupancy permit could not be issued during the period of the moratorium. During that moratorium, any existing business in the area covered by the moratorium would not be impacted. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to establish a six-month moratorium on the processing, issuance, approval of new occupancy, and zoning permits for certain uses and certain properties in the North Market Street area. We support legislation being presented as an emergency measure so that the study of this area can commence without delay. Respectfully submitted, Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Do any Council members have any comments?
I do have a question.
Mrs. Oda?
Patrick, I did notice on the way here tonight, was thinking about the doctor's office, that it has a "for sale" sign in front of it. I know we know of nothing going on right now, but what if that building were to sell?
If that building were to sell, that, I'd have to look at the map, and I don't have that in front of me. That property may actually be in a residential district, so it may be subject to some different regulations.
Yeah, I haven't had time to look that up.
It has been vacant for more than a year, I believe, and so we would have to look at that as far as the non-conforming and the grandfathering provisions of the code, regardless of whether there's a moratorium in place.
Okay. Yeah, that was just a concern I had, since it's an existing building for sale.
It is, and, you know, as a professional, a medical office, assuming it was in the correct zoning, either B-1 or B-2, that is not one of the uses that would be subject to this moratorium.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions? You may continue, Mr. Twist.
All right. This committee met on May 30th to provide a recommendation on the annexation filed on behalf of Ronald and Jane Filippo for 1.8557 acres from Concord Township. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the annexation of 1.8557 acres, more or less in the Concord Township, known as the Filippo Annexation. That is respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions from Council? You may continue.
All right. Our last one, I know you guys are all enjoying my voice. So, on June 2nd, this committee met to review the recommendation of the Planning Commission that Section 5 of the Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development be approved. The section conforms to the approved Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve Section 5 of the Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development, and that is respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions or comments from Council? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The Finance Committee has a couple of reports. Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Okay. Loan subordination agreement for Four Sons Development LLC for lots 114 to 116 South Market Street. On May 30th, this committee met to consider the approval recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that a request for subordination of CDBG Loan Fund Mortgage for the property at 114 to 116 South Market Street. The loan was approved on April of 2013. Since then, the building has been remodeled with an increase in its market value, and the building is occupied. Loan payments have been made in accordance with the terms of the loan. The subordination would permit the owner to obtain a lower interest rate for a shorter repayment period. There would not be a negative impact to the city's loan position. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to sign a subordination agreement with Greenville National Bank regarding the loan for the property located at 114 to 116 South Market Street. Consideration of emergency legislation is requested so that the private sector can be closed without delay, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions or comments from Council? You may continue, Mr. Kendall.
Okay. There is a second report, but it is not on this. It's not on the notification.
Okay. Hold just a minute, then. Let's see if we can get a... Does anyone see a second report?
I have it.
Maybe you can read it from his.
Yeah. Now, I do from one to the other. Okay. On May 30th, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the application of, that's SK Mold again, no, that was Four Sons, SK Mold, and Tool Inc. to the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund be approved. Information on the application is discussed in the detailed report. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee of approving the application as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Program, and recommends that legislation be prepared approving the loan application of SK Mold and Tool, Inc. for $94,400 from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund. We further support emergency legislation so that the loan can be processed without delay to meet the customer timeliness of the applicant, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chairman of the Finance.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
And finally, we have a report from the Law and Ordnance Committee and Chairman, Mr. John Swazer.
Yes, Madam President. We have one report tonight. On June 1st, this committee met to consider council authorization of two separate agreements for events September 15th and 16th, both of which will include the use of public property, and one which will include the use of public property for the sale, consumption of alcoholic beverages, and that the authorizations include the notwithstanding wording. The details of both events, Tour de Donut, a bicycle event, and the Rock the Bike Music Festival, are discussed in the detailed report. Both events will be family-friendly while recognizing the potential for downtown and the event sponsors to provide quality events to appeal to citizens and visitors of all ages. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Rocket Ship Sports, Inc. related to the Tour de Donut event. Authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Troy Main Street, Inc. related to the Rock the Bike Music Event. Include the standard nonwithstanding legislation for such events, and that is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Okay. Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Swazer. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing Seeing none, then, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R. 29, 2017.
Resolution number R. 29, 2017. Resolution approving the application of SK Mold and Tool, Inc. for assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This would approve a loan in the amount of $94,400 as recommended by the Loan Review Committee, first reading.
Is there any discussion from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O. 14, 2017.
Ordinance number O. 14, 2017. Ordinance accepting the final plat of Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development, Section 5, in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating a right-of-way. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twist and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move for adoption. I'll say.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O. 15, 2017.
Ordinance number O. 15, 2017. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the 2017 Tour de Donut event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy codified ordinances, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Rocket Ship Sports, Inc., therefore. This is an event that will take place on September 15 and 16, 2017, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O. 16, 2017.
Ordinance number O. 16, 2017. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the 2017 Rock the Bike Music Festival event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy codified ordinances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer and wine, subject to the issuance of proper permits by the state of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Troy Main Street, Inc., therefore. This is also an event on the dates of September 15 and September 16, 2017, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
I do have one question.
Mrs. Oda?
Patrick, when beer and wine is sold at an event like this, who is benefiting from that sale?
The proceeds will go to offset the costs of the event, and then Troy Main Street is coordinating that whole thing, so any proceeds would go back into that nonprofit.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No. I am in favor of all biking, eating of donuts, which is great, but just not the sale of alcohol, so no.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O. 17, 2017.
Ordinance number O. 17, 2017. Ordinance subordinating a mortgage lien for Four Sons Development LLC and declaring an emergency. This is involving the existing lien on the property at 114 116 South Market Street, has been recommended by the Loan Review Committee, and this is the first reading.
Are there any comments from Council?
I move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move for adoption. I'll say.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O. 14, 2017.
Ordinance number O. 14, 2017. Ordinance accepting the final plat of Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development, Section 5, in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating a right-of-way.
Move for suspension.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swayzer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
It's been moved by Mr. Swayzer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 019, 2017.
Ordinance number 019, 2017. Ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing 1.8557 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio. This is the Philpott Annexation, and this is the final time that will be reviewed by council. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
It's been moved by Mr. Swayzer and seconded by Mr. Twiss to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any notifications or announcements?
No, there are not.
May I ask, do you have any comments this evening?
Just three quick ones. We all know how successful this weekend was with the Troy Strawberry Festival. Many of us have been involved in that festival for many, many years, and I just want to thank all the volunteers, all the planning that went into it this year, the city staff for their commitment, the first responders were out there, those who knew the bikes were pretty neat to see, especially if you had to run. It's been, it was a safe, it was productive, and I think most business civic organizations and nonprofits would say that it was a big productive weekend for them, and that just benefits all of us in the community in the year ahead. That's number one, and we all knew that, it was just a great, great weekend. Coming up Wednesday, you know this too, but I want to invite all the public to come out. The historic Lock 12 will be dedicated. It's located on North Elm Street, just right out in front of Treasure Island Park, but I hope everybody will come out at 10 o'clock, be a part of that. Doug Christian will be sharing some history there, and he's always, he's certainly knowledgeable. Then I see Michael Hamm in the audience today. Michael's the facilitator of the Teen Leadership Troy event this week, as they travel around and spend the week around town. They will be with us on Thursday, along with the Amazing Race that they will be doing, but it's an opportunity for us to interact with the soon-to-be seniors at Troy High School and Sidney Lehman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tiderton, any comments?
Just two brief comments. Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, July 4th, Independence Day, will be Tuesday, it's coming up. Just a reminder that we are on regular trash and recycling schedule. We do not delay for those, for that holiday.